You want to call the roll?
Hutske.
Here.
Bastian.
Here.
Danicourt.
Here.
Kenauer. McCord.
Here.
Tidings.
Here.
Nurse Singer.
Here.
Valentine.
Here.
Sangster.
Mr. Moore.
Mr. Moore, I'm sorry.
Moore.
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 All right.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we got minutes?
Yes, and the drop was a copy of the draft minutes from February 26th.
Need the motion approved?
Say that, yeah, 26th.
Okay.
So are there any questions or concerns with it?
Give me a second.
Yeah, Terry's the one.
Bastian.
Tidings and Bastian.
Hutske.
Hi.
Bastian.
Hi.
Danicourt.
Hi.
McCord.
Uh, Sting.
Tidings.
Hi.
All right. I think you care is here. You care.
Yes, they are here.
A lot of folks. Where do we want them for?
Can use these chairs if you'd like. Do you mind moving your stuff?
Good evening.
How you doing?
Good evening.
Sangsters here, you can change the...
Late to class.
He tripped on the way in.
See how long they go. I thought there was a total of six.
Still here? Still here. Leaving tomorrow.
Okay.
Leaving tomorrow?
Yeah. They're reducing her right now. Sorry, I don't have enough of these. Probably six people.
You can share.
Okay.
We'll share.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so is there a certain format that you folks wanted me to follow?
A little new for the planning board to kind of do a work session discussion like this. It's more common for the town board. Paige is our chairman, but I don't know if you want to do a five-minute little presentation to work and ask questions.
Okay.
We do have other matters to get to before seven o'clock, and then at seven o'clock, obviously, we have a public hearing, so...
Okay, yeah, I mean, we can... This shouldn't take more than a few minutes, so...
Yeah, so we're with Your Care Medical Supply, just so you know.
Yep.
Board, board.
Okay.
Board, board.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Staff.
Staff.
Attorney. Staff. Okay.
So that's who you're talking to?
Sure, sure. Sounds good. We use the rest of...
A little bit.
Good they know who they're talking to.
Yeah, absolutely. So my name is Brad Cottier, one of the owners of Your Care Medical Supply. And this is Larry Grous, one of, you know, really one of the partners also. And we bought the company in 2011, and we inherited the current space that we're in at 2160 Penfield Road. So it's considered retail, though it's just, you know, really the business as corporation, inherited a five-year lease. Since have really outgrown the space considerably. It's about 1,500 square feet. And what we are is a durable medical equipment company. So if you look at a health insurance plan, it's listed underneath that as a benefit. Majority of what we sell is billed through both private payers or commercial insurance providers as well as Medicare. That's our primary business. Secondary to that are people that come in and just want to purchase, you know, whatever it is we sell, because they can and they want to use, you know, their own monies outside of insurance. What do we sell? It's everything from respiratory products that do require licensure. We have a certified licensed respiratory therapist that does oxygen, as well as CPAP, sleep apnea products. Anybody off the street cannot just come in and advise on these masks and these machines, because it's against rules and regulations. We're also certified through Medicare and all the insurances. We have a certification process that we go through every three years. HIPAA rules and regulations is part of that. We have to follow very strict procedures as far as where people can flow throughout our store. So really, the way it's set up is we have a front section where we can show and size people for various products and applications, a middle area where we house all the employees, and then a back end where we keep, you know, various products and inventories. Since we purchased the business, as far as positive economic impact, we've grown the business 600% in revenues and added, it was really a one and a half to two employee company at that point. We now have six employees and two contractors. Why, other than just outgrowing the space, are we looking to move? We just added a home modification division. So we serve the aging population, the baby boomers. Don't need to tell you folks how much that's a growing need, you know, in our market to serve that base. We're going to be doing a lot of kitchen and bathroom modifications. We already do some accessibility work, so specialized labor with equipment and with the supplies that we sell. So going in, helping people age at their house versus facilities, figuring out financing, figuring out, you know, the matters that are most unsafe to help them be independent and live safely as, of course, they move throughout life. Trying to think anything else that's imperative. Do you want to go where? Twenty-one twenty. Twenty-one twenty is the targeted spot that we're looking at.
The board has the property just west of Regent Orthodontics, west side of Harris Whalen Park Drive.
So second property over?
The second property, and so we just dealt with that application recently. Basically, what they're looking for is a determination that is owned business non-retail. Looking to see what the board's interpretation is. I'm sorry, I don't know if you're done with your presentation.
No, no, I mean, that's...
I don't need to...
No, that's fine. That's perfect.
But we thought it was good before they get into doing a sketch plan and then determine that they don't qualify to be under business non-retail. Basically, they're saying they're a medical use. Our code under BNR does allow medical, dental, and I know Zach gave me a copy, but I can read it off. Says medical and dental offices and clinics excluding overnight occupancy allows for offices for licensed professionals, architects, designers, office buildings, and uses accessory to above their integral part of and used solely for by permitted use as deemed appropriate by the authorized official or the authorized board. So I think we made, or this board made the determination under eyesight with an eye doctor, it was a medical use facility, and they do sell eyeglasses and eye gear.
So they are walking, they have something similar to it.
So I don't think we're looking for the board to be committed to a decision this evening. Want to make sure everybody has a chance to go. They do have retail for an outlet location in Parkside Commons. Make sure the board has an opportunity to look at what they have before the board, or if you're comfortable making a decision or determination. But also, you do have the option of defer it to the zoning board for interpretation of the code. But they would need to do that this evening, because tomorrow is the deadline to get on the next zoning board agenda, which is April 16th. Yes, April 16th. So they would have to basically submit a letter tomorrow to the zoning board asking for an interpretation of the code to get on their April 16th agenda.
That's if we...
If you opt to defer to the zoning board, it best to do that this evening. If you just say, ask them some questions, whatever you want from them, you go visit their location, see if you're comfortable making a decision, then the board can reconvene at your next scheduled meeting.
Did we do that with the optician?
No. We talked about it. We didn't have them in the setting. We had kind of brought them in. We talked about this, and we did run through it. The board felt at that time that they were medical, dental, or clinic. We thought that they were kind of under that, and then basically under number nine of permitted uses, uses accessory to those above, which is integral part of the business and solely by permitted use. So the board, we talked about it. We didn't go visit the site specifically. I think the board was... I mean, they are in the plaza there, but I think the board is familiar with what an eyeglass or an optical center eye doctor is. This is a little bit different than, you know, what I'm used to, and it's a little bit different use that the board may not be fully...
I did want to pass this around to certifications, accreditations for us, all that, you know, we have in our office. You guys can run it. As far as ours too, it's Monday through Friday, 9:00 to 5:30 is when we're open, and Saturdays from 10:00 to 1:00.
It's more like office.
Yeah, to allow people to come in on the weekends. We're open a few hours on Saturday, but generally, yeah, we're open when most standard businesses are.
So do people make appointments when they come in?
Yeah, yep. They make appointments for various fittings, you know, either for braces and supports or with our respiratory therapist. And then we also deliver a lot of product out to the community. We have a 50-mile delivery radius. We run two trucks.
So how many walk-ins do you get a day just to come and buy things?
I mean, probably, you know, depending on the traffic counts, it's anywhere from 30 to, you know, probably 50 to 60 would be pretty high.
That's on a daily basis?
Yeah. And I don't know if this means anything, but we were located on Willow Pond Way in that office park originally too. I don't know what the, how you have that zone, but those are offices also?
That's a PE district, so land unit development, which allows for mixing uses. Which can be office, can be... I stepped in there this morning, took a look, and it, and obviously, it's not eyeglasses, but to me, it's this similar type thing. You know, I could go into eyesight and buy a pair of sunglasses right now if I want without an appointment. This would be the same kind of thing, just different parts of the body. That was my take on it.
Was it busy?
No, Zach met me there, and we're the only ones there.
It was 9:30 in the morning, so you guys were just opening.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
We do have a fitting room and, you know, I believe that picture's in there, so... Again, the whole goal is for us to be able to expand in this new division, expand into a bigger space, and hopefully own the real estate, you know, while we do it, so...
So you actually have some professionals there that do the fitting, sizing?
I'm a certified orthotic fitter, so is Amy Brewer, who works at our facility. I'm also a certified accessibility consultant, and we're also CAPS, certified aging in place certif-, you know, we have those recommendations and certifications too, so... Everything we sell off the wall requires a measurement. So why you come to us versus a pharmacy is we have to measure you, size you, and get you the right product.
The whole modification business, is that just, you just contract it out to local builders?
We have, you know, for right now, we have two contractors we work with primarily. They are subcontractors. We will in the future for them to be employees.
If you don't have any, you don't store any materials at you?
We do store some of the lifts and the ramps internally. Yeah.
Lumber.
Yeah, that we would just, the materials we would buy either from the vendors, suppliers we have access to, or the local big box stores. Thoughts?
Jose?
Seems pretty similar to eyesight that's already approved, so...
Terry?
Yeah. Seems pretty similar. I'm trying to get counsel.
Oh.
One concern I have is, again, it's really, whether or not this board wants to make an interpretation of the BNR and whether or not, because this is really not a... They don't issue prescriptions, if you will. They fulfill prescriptions. I suppose that, is that a fair statement?
Yeah.
I'm not able to come to you and say, you know, if I need this specific situation, if it needs to be covered by medical insurance, you guys can write it right there, or do I have to get a referral in and that I have?
No, we don't. None of us are authorized to write prescriptions.
So basically, it's, so I'm coming to you, and you're performing a service of providing the, whatever the medical device is needed. The question then is whether or not this board would like the zoning board of appeals to really take a look at that and make, you know, a request for interpretation under 3-66A. If the zoning board of appeals reviews that and says, yes, we believe it's within that scope, and that's what some of the discussion has been, then perhaps that might be the better course of action. That's when Peter and I reviewed it, and we thought maybe that would be the better way to review.
Okay.
So you guys have the option either let yourselves, or if you want to make that option, then that allows them tomorrow to submit a letter to get on the zoning board's April 16th to get a determination from that zoning board.
Any thoughts?
It makes sense to me just to get a second opinion on the use versus...
As you say, it's a little different than eyesight or a dentist or whatever, and that's why, you know, we entertain having them come in, talk to the board before they go through a sketch plan or get too far into it, and make sure we send them down the right path, but, you know, it was a little bit different use than, you know, it wasn't quite as straightforward.
I don't have a problem with it, but I would like a second opinion. I think that this board would like to maybe we could send a letter to the zoning board supporting this, but leave it up to them.
Just want to make the motion to send it to the zoning board, right? Make a determination, like Lou said, and so they can get it tomorrow, and then if the zoning throws it, come back and we'll proceed from there.
Okay, need somebody to make the motion?
Yeah.
I'll make the motion to send it to zoning.
A second.
Hutske.
Hi.
Bastian.
Hi.
Danicourt.
Hi.
McCord.
Hi.
Tidings.
Hi.
I'd say work with Harold Morehouse. I don't know if you've been in discussions with him already. I think you just better get him a letter tomorrow. It's his deadline to get on the April 16th work session with the zoning board of appeals. So if you get him that tomorrow, then we can get you on the agenda.
Sounds good.
If the zoning board's good with it, sounds that this board is generally supportive of it, then we can get into a, you know, site plan, and we'll be back to the zoning board, you know, dealing with site plan issues and location stuff.
Okay, all right.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next item we have to get to before the public hearing is Qdoba. Last meeting, Qdoba had submitted an alternate iteration of their...
Oh, I didn't get that one.
Plans. Yeah, it's up on the right side. At that time, the board denied that application based on that architectural design. Subsequently, they have resubmitted again, listened to the board's concerns and thoughts on matching more the massing and the design of the original building. But if they wanted to make some color changes, they could. So they've resubmitted for that. PRC took a look at that. PRC is supportive of the alternative change that they've shown. Again, it's got to come back before this board. Zach, if you can pan back to... So the top is, the board originally approved the bottom is what they've come back with now, similar stone. It's got the ephesus up above, that metal banding in there, you know, for the more modernistic look. They've taken the vertical wood leather slats that they had originally at the top of the building and put them in the surround area for the outside patio space down below. Yep, they have awning up above. So awning is in the back, and then the Qdoba sign sits vertically in front of that, and then they've...
Kind of see that over here.
And then they've carried some of that color on the other side. These renderings and submissions they've sent show a four-sided design. The last design I know, they had a lot in the front with the different colors and styles, but then the back of the building was basically just block on the back of the building. So this is more of a four-sided treatment all the way around.
On that perspective, if you go back to the...
This is the back?
Perspective view.
Total 3D?
Yeah.
Sorry.
What is that green band along the bottom?
I believe it's a copper, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's a copper treatment on the bottom.
Oh. That those tile bricks that are, I think I brought them in last time.
Oh, the tiles, okay.
There you go.
No, that's...
The glazed brick. I mean, it looks like a tile, it's a glazed brick that's, it's then off-green, the one colored.
The Qdoba green?
Yeah, the green, everybody seemed to like, so that's what I suggested.
I don't, I have a problem with this one personally. Just don't like the first one. You want a first one?
I like the first one.
I like this one.
Yeah, I like this one. I think they answered several of the things that we brought up, so...
I think all the questions staff had, Zach, I'm trying to go back to the original one, is if some other brick on the outside corners, there's a brick on that outside corner there, if that would kind of tie that in, if that was not necessary, just to kind of, like on that outside edge, they kind of had a small little brick. There's some stone or something in that piece. That was something that Doug brought up, but that was a good thought, just to throw it out there for the board, but they haven't proposed that, but if you think that if it's not necessary, then... What do you feel about the brick on the other end?
I think it'd be a nice addition, but I'm not going to move. To me, it's not a showstopper.
It's not really brick. It's, is that like the culture stone?
That's stone. And the one thing I was going to say is that they basically, the biggest thing what they wanted to do is the old design, is their old image. So they just wanted, they said, we'll work with everything the town wants, but we just want to have a completely different one. So they're like, we'll work with the massing and everything. So you could see that basically carrying that steel band around the corner is kind of different than the approach of putting a bookend at the side. And if you look at the other elevation that has the wood at the face, it addresses the breaking up, the making more of a different massing. I think if you go, the one side elevation is really pleasing on the, basically... Zach, if you go to the side that actually shows the seating, that shows the wood.
Sorry.
One more. Yeah, the other side of that wall, the left-hand face, you had that one. And you could really see how that kind of starts to show the intersecting planes. They have more of a modern interpretation, but it kind of addresses the concerns that the board had on it.
The back of that building, is that more of the green?
Just at the water table, that's it. And the green, the green band is matching the color of the awning. That's to the left-hand side. Yep, that's just...
What is this up there?
That's just, that's the ephesus band at the top, just matching the color, because the comments we, and that could change if the board wants to. They just, when we came at the 10:00 AM meeting, they wanted more of the green, so we booked the green.
It was just very white all the way around the building, and just the two little canopies in the front. We thought at least if they're going to go with the green look, add a little bit more...
It also breaks up the white.
Color, just being some light around the outside like this.
All right, entertain motion to accept these changes.
So...
I'll second.
McCord and Bastian.
Hutske.
Hi.
Bastian.
Hi.
Danicourt.
Hi.
McCord.
Hi.
Tidings.
No, not... I know.
I got your vote. You're outvoted.
Again.
It's not good to have a few names all the time. Don't beat yourself.
Don't worry. I'm the chairman. Thank you very much.
Finally got your wish.
So since we have all the miscellaneous items we have.
Okay, we have about five minutes to recess and get up to the diets for the public hearing. Welcome to the March 12th, 2015, meeting of the Penfield Planning Board. As always, we will begin this meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, tonight we have three items on our agenda. There are two sketch plans and a preliminary and final public hearing. Sketch plan is an informal review before the board, before before an applicant will come through with a preliminary and final. They're really looking for feedback from the planning board. So as such, sometimes a lot of details are not completed. It's, engineering studies aren't complete and so forth. The process that we go through is applicant will present their project to us. The board members will ask questions, and then we will open up for discussion and comment from the public. So if you wish to speak to an application or about an application, please address the board and not the applicant, and give us your opinions. That's what we're here for, is to hear your opinions. So with that, Zach, please read the first item on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Application number one. Dr. Kristen Brown and Dana Brown of Theravet Acres Rehabilitation and Fitness at 1748 Kennedy Road, Webster, New York, 14580, requesting an informal discussion with the board regarding the expansion of their veterinary rehabilitation and fitness business on the 19.59 acre property located at 1724 Kennedy Road. The property is now reformally owned by Dana and Kristen Brown and is zoned RA2. Application number 15P-0007, SBL number 111.01-1-8.1.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Dana Brown. This is my wife, Dr. Kristen Brown. Jacob Mountain is our architect. I'll just kind of go over the project briefly, and then if there's any questions, we can entertain those. We did get your feedback with some of the questions, and we'll address those this evening. A lot of that, again, was just preliminary, as you said, hasn't been gotten to yet, but all of that will be taken care of. But our veterinary practice, Theravet Acres, has been in existence since first appointments were 2006. We do a different type of veterinary medicine. We don't do any routine veterinary care. We only do physical therapy. We only do canine therapy and rehabilitation, acupuncture, chiropractic, some of the more alternative methods. We use a lot of hydrotherapy, laser therapy, ultrasound, very interesting, cutting-edge stuff, becoming very much more popular as our business has continued to grow and has proven that. We are at the point now where we've completely maximized the usage of our facilities. There's the house, there's what was a garage converted to the clinic, and then even part of the barn. Everything is currently being utilized. We don't have any room for tenants in the house anymore. We had to kick everybody out and turn it into offices and just allow us room to work. And we're still busy seeing appointments six days a week, sometimes even through the winter, which is unusual. So it's a field that's continuing to grow, and we've helped a lot of dogs. It's very exciting. It's neat to see dogs that come in, they can't walk, they're having problems walking, they're having difficulty getting up and moving around. We're able to get them moving again and kind of buy back some of that time with their owners, so they can enjoy their, enjoy their lives. So business has been booming. We've been talking about this expansion for a number of years. We've sat down with some of the different boards and looked at different options. We, several years ago, we purchased the property at 1724 with the intent, which is adjacent to the current facility, with the intent of developing that into some form of what we've started to put together here. The, so, I mean, everything's pretty well laid out. There's going to be, let me just take this. We have the, this would be combination canine and equine. Right now, at our current facility, most everything we do is canine. The equine appointments, Dr. Brown goes to the farms and does chiropractic and acupuncture. We would like to put in a barn with an indoor to be able to house a few horses here for what's called layup boarding and have a pasture area for them. But the majority of the work, and we expect the majority of the business, to continue to be in the veterinary rehabilitation, and we would like to add a pool, both an indoor as well as an outdoor water area for dogs, because that's something that's becoming much more popular. We're seeing in the Buffalo area, three different pools, and right now in our area, we only have one that just recently opened. So as you can see, the facility here would be laid out roughly doubling the capacity of what we're currently doing. This would probably be about a 10,000 to 12,000 square foot. Jake, is that where we were?
We were at 17,000 square feet.
17,000?
Yep.
Is that including the barn?
Nope.
No, just that? Okay, bigger than I thought. These would be fenced areas for dogs, for just play areas for dogs that, not unsupervised, but with our staff or with an owner out there with them. We have a boarding facility. We board therapy dogs as well as healthy dogs. So we have an area here for dogs to just be able to, you know, go out and do their business and come back in. And that's mostly what that's for. These are play areas. With the rest of the property here, we may open up some, we have some trails already back there. It may be something that we use just for walking dogs ourselves, as part of the staff. A water area here. We're still figuring this out. We envision this to be, like the Beverly Hillbillies, might... We envision this to be, like the Beverly Hillbillies might say, a cement pond. This would be an area where dogs in the summertime could go and have a clean place to play in the water without, you know, having to worry about getting, you know, all kinds of biological infections and things from going to creeks and whatever. So some of the points and the questions that you had, stormwater treatment area, definitely, probably back in this area, we'll have a stormwater retention is what we're visualizing. There is a wetlands back in this property. This line was very recently delineated, actually, by the DEC. They came out and flagged this within the last year and a half. And then the...my surveyor came and actually surveyed that line in. So that's actually surveyed data of where they flagged that. And obviously, we know we got the 100-foot buffer we'll stay. And inside of that, we're used to working with the wetlands from being on the other property for years now. So we know all the rules with that. But the stormwater area will probably be back in this area. Septic was mentioned. Obviously, there's lots and lots of open area with nine or 10 acres there for septic. We will actually split off this property into about a nine or 10-acre parcel that will be advantageous for us in financing through an SBA 504 program, 'cause we can use that property as equity towards the project. So that's one of the main reasons we're splitting that off. It'll cost a little bit more in taxes, but I don't think the town'll mind. Let's see, septic, turnaround at the end of the parking lot? Yeah, definitely, that's something we can incorporate. Snow areas, these are all things that we'll be looking at. Handicap spaces, site distances for the driveway location. I don't think we have them on there, but there's...you know what the regulations are for site distance?
Not my head of devil.
We'll get you some numbers on that. One thing I did wanna talk about, and we can do that now or at some other point, but the town...they mentioned the town sidewalk and tree...street tree policy. I'd love...we would plan to have some trees along here, definitely. I don't see where a sidewalk would fit in along Kennedy Road. I'm not sure how that works.
That's a requirement for all development in the town. And you have the choice of building the sidewalk along your property or petitioning the town board or asking the town board if they'll grant you a waiver, in which case, in lieu of building the sidewalk, generally, they ask you to pay what it would cost for the sidewalk into the sidewalk fund, so that, you know, there's a master plan for sidewalks and so that those funds would go help maybe an area that is more appropriate for sidewalks.
Yeah.
I'm not saying that this one isn't. It's not my call.
It would be the only sidewalk on Kennedy Road, that's for sure. Yeah, delineation, top of line. Top of line shall exceed 100 feet beyond the border of the property. That wasn't something that we had been familiar with previously. Is that a new requirement?
I'm sorry.
It says the topographical, the elevation lines are supposed to...
The contours are supposed to be 100 feet.
100 feet onto...
It's not new, go ahead, Zach.
I can address that. That is just something we'll need when we...if you come back for preliminary, final application, those grading plans that you submit, we'd have to go beyond your property lines to see what that grading is outside of it.
Okay.
That's all that is.
Yeah, it's really just this one property line here that we'll have to worry about, okay.
Yep, so just have to make sure that's shown.
Okay. Landscape plan will be put in snow storage. Indicate on plans where proposed lighting will be installed, yep. Lighting is, again, just gonna be lighting necessary for...to meet safety requirements for people coming in and going out, parking, moving in and out of parking lots and buildings. We're not gonna plan to have any...you know, we're not gonna have lighted fields here or anything like that. There's no nighttime activities.
Or dog walks or anything?
Yeah, no...yeah, no midnight dog walk sponsor events or anything like that. Fire hydrant, yeah, there's...we'll put them on there. There's one on either side here, I believe. That's all the information.
Would this all be built in one phase?
Ideally, yes. If we go to two phases, probably the equine portion would be the second phase. But all of this, at a minimum, is something that we need in order for the business to be able to operate.
The outdoor pool, would that have...were you thinking slope sides? How would...what would the entry to that be like and how deep would it be?
I'm envisioning that being definitely more like just a rounded, you know... The total depth is probably gonna be like four feet, four and a half feet. And it would just be real gentle from any one side, kinda going in.
And I mean, that's about a 12,000-square-foot swimming pool.
We haven't scaled it out on here yet, so...
It's a big pool.
Yeah, it may not...it may not end up being that big.
'Cause that building up top is 17,000 square feet?
Yeah, that pool's a little...
It's a big pool.
Yeah, that pool's represented a little larger than it...
Gonna do sailing lessons on there?
Yeah, probably.
Is that all fenced as well, that pool area? I didn't hear you say the fencing.
Yes, yes, that would definitely be fenced. Ideally, we'd actually like to...we'd actually like to fence the property if that doesn't happen right away. That would be something, just in the instance that a dog gets out or something like that, we have everything fenced except for, you know, and even gates here that we can close. So that's just something we've considered for security.
Your existing business is on the triangle-shaped property to the east?
Yes, correct, right here.
What would happen to that? Would that continue?
No.
Or would everything would be moved over, and then what would you do with that?
So that would go back to residential use. Yeah. We may have staff living there or purchasing or whatever, but that would be residential use. There wouldn't be any business activities down there.
Driveway and parking paved?
That's our current plan.
I don't mean to monopolize the questions here.
So the property kind of between the two, there's another house there?
This is...yeah, this is our residence.
That's your residence now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So all the way back, that would just be more of a residential use?
Yes, this is...and right now, there's a riding ring right here, and this is all open field, pasture field for horses. So we do have horses at this property. At times, we have horses up here. So there...this is already all fenced for horse use.
What's the overall size of that parcel that you're looking to split off?
This would get split off somewhere between nine and 10 acres.
How large is the horse barn?
I'm sorry, the what?
The horse barn.
9,000 square feet.
9,000 square feet?
9,000 square feet.
And the 17,000-square-foot facility on the other side are above it?
Yep.
Is that 9,000 both?
No. Yeah, both.
Yeah, the indoor and the barn.
Yeah, both are 9,000.
Okay, total.
Yeah.
Wow, okay.
So total about 26,000 square feet proposed structure?
Any idea what kind of traffic you expect? Say, how many visits per day?
Right now, yeah. It's a good question. That's something that we're gonna be looking at more as we continue to develop the business plan. We visualize this more or less doubling our current business. And right now, we might have between people dropping off dogs and coming in for therapy...dropping off or picking up dogs for boarding and coming in for therapy appointments. You know, we might have 20 dogs a day coming and going. So, you know, maybe 40 to 50 dogs a day would be a rough estimate for that.
So roughly 40 to 50 visitors in and out?
Yeah, yeah.
And have you talked with the neighbors? I think there might be a couple across the street and then maybe one to the west.
Mm-hmm, yep. Yes, Harland and Katie Beckwith live pretty much directly across from us. I've reviewed the plans with them over the years, actually, as we've been developing this. I've kinda kept them up to date on what we're doing, and they've been fine with everything. They're excited about it. In fact, Katie thinks maybe she should get a job here. Work right across the street, who knows? And then we have a new neighbor. The neighbor here, I have not talked with. This is actually a rental house right now. And I believe he's now...he has sold the property back here to the gentleman that's also owns this lot. He purchased from Jim Wilbert. And I have spoken with him. He came out, and I gave him kind of the tour of the facility and showed him the plans and went over everything with him. His only concerns were perhaps adding some buffering along here, 'cause his house is gonna sit, I believe, right about...right about here and kinda looking this way. So as long as there's not constant barking dogs or, you know, any annoyances like that, he was fine with everything. And we don't want constant barking dogs. It's not the type of boarding that we do. It's kinda higher-end boarding. We try to keep the dogs active, get them out for, you know, 15 or 30-minute play sessions a couple of times a day and regular walks, you know, five or six times a day. So they generally stay pretty active and they stay...they're pretty content.
Go ahead.
With 40 or 50 dogs, up to four horses, I think, you said, a four-stall barn?
Correct.
What are you gonna do with all the manure? What do you do with it now? I mean, that's a lot each day.
It is. Some of it gets spread on the pastures here. Some of it, right now, is actually back in this...in the back portion of this property. We spread that out and then when...'cause Dave Woodward is farming this, and so he'll take that. And sometimes we'll actually put it out here, and he'll spread it out and he'll...when he goes and tilts up the property in the spring. For longer term here, again, we've got this property which could handle the manure loading. It could also be hauled off just as easily or stockpiled in an area that's, you know, well away from the property lines. And again, there's several farmers around us that can come and take that and make good use of it.
Okay.
How did you come up with a number of parking spots?
I don't think we've officially looked at that yet, have we?
No, we haven't. But that's based on occupancy of the building, obviously. So how many employees need the spots and then how many clientele?
It might be something that staff can help with. I mean, 17,000-square-foot building, depending on the use, might require a lot more. Or 26,000 square feet might require a lot more than what you actually do need. But we gotta look at the codes for that.
So it may go based on the size of the building as opposed to the...
Generally, yeah, but... Does this be considered an agricultural structure? Yes. Go ahead, Zach.
Yeah, it would be considered agricultural, but again, when we...if you come back for preliminary, final, Harold Morehouse and our billing department would be looking at all those calculations and determine if that would need variance or from the zoning board for parking number reduction. Those are all things that we would look at at later phase, but that's something you need to investigate as you propose, you know, more preliminary, final plans.
Definitely not a problem. We're a little tight on parking right now, so I don't wanna get in a situation in the future where we've got people fighting for spots or whatever. I'd rather have extra spaces available. We've got the land for it, we've got the space for it, so we'll work with the town to make sure we come up with something that makes sense.
These...the lines of the little Xs, those represent fencing, correct?
Correct.
So to the right of the equine building, you have this equine pasture, but it almost looks like...
Those are what would be called paddocks or runouts, where, you know, the four stalls would be here. Again, these are for horses that are here for layup boarding, so we don't want them out in a place where they can run around and hurt themselves or re-injure themselves. This, again, would be for horses that are, you know, at the point where they can be in a more open area. But these would be just places for the horses to be able to get out.
And do a little walking around or something?
Yeah, walk down and walk back, but they can't build up any speed.
Okay.
That's why they're so small.
Gotcha. Curious. Any other questions from the board?
Yep. Any plans for obedience training and things like that, where you might have a few people arriving all at once? That kinda thing?
To a limited extent. Part of the...and I don't have the...I don't have the building plans up here, but part of the space here is an indoor arena. You've got the plans there. We would not be hosting like big weekend events or anything like that, but we would have that available and open for somebody to come in and run classes for training. So you might have...yeah, you might have six or eight or 10 people or something coming in, but, you know, we're not gonna... Or somebody wants to do a small conference or something there. But I wouldn't think we'd...I couldn't see more than, you know, 10 to 20 people at any one time coming in for something like that. And it probably would be more of the off-hours from when the rest of the clinic would be busy, just due to the nature of staff availability.
Okay, and then one more question. As far as breeding, any plans for breeding dogs, puppies, that kind of thing?
None planned. Nope.
Any other questions from the board? Anyone in...Zach?
Sorry, and this just goes back to the parking that we were talking about. And I just wanna confirm that there are no plans for like dog shows, agility training events, anything outside that require, you know, more parking as proposed? I just wanted to confirm that.
Correct, we are not planning on having, yeah, large agility events or dog shows or anything, yeah, where we have large numbers of people coming in. It would again be...it would be training, you know, smaller training groups. Maybe dog clubs or whatever that have, you know, several members that come out and train together or a trainer comes in and needs a place to be able to run some lessons.
Thank you.
All right, would anyone in the audience like to comment on this proposal? Yes, if you could come up and come up to the podium, give us your name and address for the record. And then we'd love to hear your comments.
Hi, I'm Collette Eldred, I reside at 1843 Kennedy Road. And it looks like a beautiful building. I just have to say, it's extremely large for our residential neighborhood. I know originally when Theravet first opened, they had come to the town and basically said that they were going to maintain a small business on the property. And they have a beautiful business. It's very nice, very well-maintained. The buildings are kept up. But I don't believe that this is what the neighborhood had in mind originally when the business had opened. So I do have some serious concerns about this. This is a major project for a rural road, a residential neighborhood. We're on almost nine acres. We have a 2,600-square-foot house. And 27,000 square feet is very significant to our...an impact on our little country road, our neighborhood. The infrastructure as well on Kennedy Road is a concern. The road is very narrow. We don't have any shoulders. The little bit of shoulder that we have is stone shoulders. It's not paved. They...you know, we have a kind of...the town always tells us where this little agricultural country road, there's not a lot of traffic. But in the winter, it's very hard to discern what part of the road you're supposed to drive on. It's very bad, it's very dangerous. There is quite a little hump in front of the property for consideration that does pose some site distance concerns. You're good as long as you stay to...significantly to your side, to the right side of the road. I'm very concerned about the increased traffic. The 40 to 50 cars a day, that's 40 to 50 people coming and going, leaving a pet, picking up a pet, is quite significant to what we see on our road currently. It's very quiet. There's a little bit of increased traffic with the business as it is. But my concern as well is what happens if multiple other people in the neighborhood decide to open businesses on their large parcels too? I mean, we're turning into a...more of a business area than a neighborhood that we are. There is a small business towards the corner of Salt Road that's really not a business. It's storage for a landscaping facility. it's storage for a landscaping facility. And several years ago, they put up a barn and every day in the nice weather, the men are out there, the trucks are out there, they leave their cars, they get in their trucks, they drive away to do their landscaping, they come back and, you know, it's, it's not really a storage facility. They store malt sometimes, take it and go with it, people coming and going from there too as well. So there's two businesses really already established on our road. One question I did have is I'm wondering where the dogs are going to be walked because currently they are walked on the road and they're really cute, but you have to slow down and make sure that you move out of the way for the dog walkers and sometimes there's two or three people walking dogs at a time on the road in the nice weather. So I know there was some mention of paths, so I don't know if that's going to transition over to walking on paths as opposed to out on the road. I don't have a problem with them walking the dogs on the road, but if they're going to significantly increase their business, I, I think that that's, that's just not acceptable. So I guess my, my main concern really is initially when Theravet opened, we were told it was going to be small. You know, everyone in the neighborhood was certainly happy to have them come into the neighborhood. It was proposed as we're going to do a small business, we have a really unique type of therapy that we're going to provide that's not in this area. We'd like to do that and nobody really spoke up and said anything because we all thought it was a great idea. But now, this is a major expansion that looks like something that would be more suitable to a main road, a Route two fifty, possibly an Atlantic Avenue. It's quite impressive as I sit here. When I looked at the sketch online, it didn't seem as imposing. The square footage was mentioned at twelve thousand square feet. Now we've moved to twenty-seven thousand square feet and we've got little houses on the road and we've got our cluster of neighborhood down the road. I'm only a half a mile from here and I pass the business multiple times a day. So it's a big concern. It's a real change to the neighborhood, to the aesthetics of where we live. And I wish them the best. It's, like I say, the, the business that's there now, it's beautiful, they take care of everything, it's nicely done. It's just that I don't know if this type of expansion is necessarily suited for the area that we live in. I do have a couple other questions in addition to my comments. I'm just wondering what hours the business plans on being open? And just, you know, how, I know there's still some questions as to zoning and things, so probably getting a little bit ahead of myself. And the sight distance too. There's a very large hill here. It's not really that large, but when you're coming, traveling west on the road, it's very difficult to see. You can't see anyone coming at you from the other side, so if someone's walking and they're on the wrong side of the road, you get a surprise just as you cross that hill because the person's right there and if they don't hear you coming, they're right in the way. So it's a pretty dangerous spot. So moving the driveway down towards the other end is a benefit to keep it away from that hill, but it's still, still a concern as I said. The road is pretty, pretty, pretty tiny. I guess that's, that's what I have for comments.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, good comments. Anyone else in the audience like to comment about this sketch plan? Anyone else from the board? Additional comments? I have one question for you about proposed architecture.
Yes.
What, what do you propose that the buildings look like?
So what we, what we're envisioning specifically for this building, the, the equine building is, would be just the standard metal sided building.
Be a barn?
Yeah, it's going to look like a barn.
I mean, there are a lot of going around, so I think it would fit in well.
This facility, if you're familiar with Jeremiah's Tavern?
Mm-hmm.
Down here, we would like, maybe not the whole, probably these two sides and maybe not all the way up, maybe a portion of it, but, you know, a, a rural, a rural looking, a rural look to it is, is what we, is what we're going to be going for. Not, not ultra-modern or anything that would stand out. We, you know, we want something, in fact, I think it's actually going to match up very well with the, the house that the new neighbor wants to build here because he said he was going to have the, almost the same look as that as well.
Okay. Thank you.
And if you'd like, I could address some of her?
Sure.
Questions, because there were some very good questions there. Yeah, as far as walking the dogs, we would definitely love to get away from, from walking on, on Kennedy Road during the, in the wintertime with the snow, depending on where the snow's blowing and drifting. Some of the dogs do have certain restrictions and so we do have to be careful. We, we try to keep areas plowed where, you know, within our property and everything. And again, we would try to do that to, you know, minimize dogs walking on the road. I don't know if that's something that we could completely eliminate, but that would be something that we could talk about because we could, we could get the equipment to, you know, to make sure that we maintain open paths. I think that that's something that we could definitely accomplish. And as far as the hours, typically Monday through Friday, eight AM, clients coming is probably more like nine, nine AM to probably about, the last client would probably be arriving about seven PM, leaving at eight. Saturday, I believe we have it listed as like eight or nine till four or five. And, and Sundays, it would, if there's dogs doing swimming, we wouldn't have any therapy clients that we're planned to be seeing on Sundays. That's part of the reason we're trying to expand now so that we can get a, we can get away from that, be able to handle more dogs during the day during the week.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Sure. Okay, Mr. Nursing, would you like to read the second sketch plan?
Application number two. Land Tech Surveying and Planning, P L L C, thirty-seven oh eight St. Paul Boulevard, Rochester, New York, one four six one seven. On behalf of Rick Altier, Penfield Mosley LLC, request an informal discussion with the board regarding the construction of a new convenience store at the mobile gas station and a new car wash service with associated site improvements on one acre, on the one acre property located at twenty-one seventy-five Penfield Road, Penfield, New York, one four five two six. The property is now reformally owned by Penfield Mosley LLC and is zone GB. Application number fifteen P dash zero 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 six, S B L number one three nine point zero two dash one dash four.
Good evening. My name's Adam Freeman. I'm an engineer at Land Tech. As Zach said, we've got a one acre property at the corner of two fifty and four forty-one. It's the mobile gas station and the proposal would be to demolish the existing convenience store to allow construction of a new convenience store with a drive-through as well as a automatic car wash between the convenience store and the neighbor to the south, the Taco Bell. The pumps would remain, the entrances would remain, the majority of the pavement as well as, we'd, we'd like to keep the frame shed just for storage of some of the things that, you know, like advertising displays and things like that that are seasonal. And, but it's a pretty straightforward. Like I said, majority of the stuff that's out there, you know, infrastructure wise would stay. Our biggest issue is, I believe at this point would be the sewer to the site. There is a sewer at, in front of the Taco Bell, but it's a private sewer that's owned by Wegmans. All the other sewer, public sewer in the areas, all the properties are actually fed from behind, so there's nothing along the road to connect to. So that's the biggest hurdle in engineering wise at this point. Town staff did bring up some, just wanting to make sure that stormwater attenuation for the increased runoff was handled. And I think we've got enough lawn area that, that'll remain that we can just provide some little depressed areas to, to get the water detained, detention stored on. Let's see, I think the, the rest of their comments were mostly regarding setbacks required, which, as well as the more than one use on the property, all of which would require variances, which we are aware of and anticipate needing to go to the zoning board for. And there is a building elevation of the, the Express Mart that would just be facing two fifty, two fifty-one, no, four forty-one, sorry.
I got all the numbers.
And the, the car wash, obviously, you know, they would want to match, so the, it would be a similar style. And I would also anticipate a flat roof on that as well. I guess really the only other comment from the town staff was regarding a flush curb to allow plowing in the winter, which would definitely, you know, something we'd consider. Whether, you know, just a mountable curb, something that would still keep the, keep the parking lot delineated, but still, you know, allow people to, allow snow to be pushed over it without breaking up the curb or anything. So I guess that's it. If you have any questions?
Green space, what's the percentage now and what's the proposed percentage?
The percentage now is sixty-seven point, or no, sorry, that's, our lot coverage is sixty-seven point eight. So our green space is right now?
Thirty-two.
Thirty, yeah, just about thirty-two. And it would be going down to about twenty-four and a half.
Currently, when you have deliveries, fuel deliveries, those trucks go to that pad that's on the west side, right?
Yes.
In the winter, on a busy car wash day, how do you propose to manage the traffic with a delivery truck, a fuel delivery and stacking cars waiting for the wash?
Um, how, what's that?
They come overnight.
They do come overnight? Okay, so the trucks actually come in overnight? And by the way, this is Rick Altier. He's one of the members of the owners of the property.
Again, I don't want to monopolize.
Yeah, I just got, so the, the laser wash is open just during the daytime hours and is it not open twenty-four hours?
Well, the, the laser wash would, I mean, unless there was a restriction set, you know, could be open twenty-four hours, but there wouldn't be that demand during the overnight where, you know, you would have cars lined up waiting to use the, the car wash the way you might during the day. So, you know, if a car came in while a truck was unloading fuel, there should, there'd still be plenty of room to get around that truck and get to the car wash. You just wouldn't have a lot of stacking available at the time.
So it is kind of a self-contained system, the car wash? You're not going to have people?
Correct.
Taking money in the front or drying cars, kind of like the Delta Sonic where there's people all over the place?
Right. It would be a, a laser wash style where, yeah, you'd, you'd pay, you know, to have the, the pay station right before you enter. Door closes when you go in, it does its thing, door opens and you leave. There wouldn't be an attendant.
Similar to the one down by Eastview, basically? There's a mobile down there?
And then the restaurant, any plans for, I know this is one of the questions that P R C was asking, but any, what, what plans do you have for the restaurant and kind of, what kind of?
Yeah, they, they don't have any commitments yet. I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't expect it to be terribly difficult, you know, once, it's always easier once something's approved for, you know, to really get interest in, in a facility, so.
Similar type thing like Hess is doing, that type of scale?
Yeah, I mean, like, I would think of like a Dunkin' Donuts or, you know, a coffee shop. I don't know if, you know, maybe even a Subway. I don't know if they, something along those lines.
Would the hours, would the hours of the business change? I mean, currently it shuts down at midnight?
Five AM.
So it's still, it would continue to be five AM to midnight?
Right now, there's, there's parking in, in the front there and it looks like that's the only, that's when you're done, that's going to be the only parking. You're, you're still going to have the same amount of parking and any plans?
Yeah, I mean, right now, it's, it's not even striped. It's, I mean, so there is, really the only true parking they have right now are these three spaces here. Obviously, the majority of people?
There's cars there.
Right, nobody, you know, employees might park there, but the majority of the people just kind of park around and, you know, doing this, we would actually have, you know, stripe the spaces to delineate it so that it's, you know, a little better traffic flow through the property.
Speaking of traffic flow, the traffic pattern, I'm just trying to visualize how it's going to work here. It seems like there's going to be a lot of conflict.
Basically, if you were coming in off of two fifty, you would have to go to the right. And if you were going to the car wash, you'd have to go all the way around and we would have signage and we could even stripe the pavement as necessary to direct people around the building. And then, so base, and there'd be a bypass lane between people stacked up for the drive-through and the car wash. So if somebody were coming out and wanted to go to two fifty, they would just be able to pull through that, that bypass lane.
One of the, one of the locations I'm looking at is people coming out of the pickup window?
Yep.
They're going to be facing traffic if they're coming off of Penfield Road or four forty-one at the pump, at the pumps. I mean, you know, sometimes people don't park that close to the pump.
Right.
So I could see where it's going to be too narrow to get through there. You've only got less than twenty feet to begin with.
Right, there's about, so, I mean.
It's, it's, it's tight, it's real tight.
Yeah, I, I mean, if you, a typical, you know, like subdivision road is twenty feet. I mean, you do have gutters on top of that, that helps a little bit, but it, it's not ideal, but, and I know there was discussion about, you know, possibly removing the, the pumps on the one side if, if, you know, it was felt that it was necessary, you know, to avoid that conflict. But, I mean, there, there is almost, we would have it striped through there so that, you know, provide almost ten feet. Plus the pickup window would be ending pretty much at the pump, you know, so be, the, the second pump to the, the north, you really wouldn't have that, that same, that situation.
Have you thought of moving the building a little closer to the front setback line? And I know maybe you're trying to avoid a variance with the setback line, but the, the building next door appears to be closer to the setback line and the existing building is actually under the canopy. is actually under the canopy, right?
Yes, the existing building is under the canopy.
And it seems like it would just open up so much more space behind the building and make it easier for traffic flow all around.
They'd explored doing something similar to what's out there now, and just with the, with the building, because the existing building is so short and small, and the newer building would be basically too tall to fit under the canopy. And there were, like I said, they explored it, and there were just a lot of construction concerns that they came up with the.
Okay. Again, I'm Rick Altier. The problem with that building is that the canopy structures come down at various points across the front, and when we moved the building forward, they were going to interfere with the canopy structure, so I looked at changing the canopy and alleviating those beams coming in the middle of the store, and it just made a lot more sense just to start it at the edge of the canopy and not touch anything to do with those beams. So that's why it's where it is, going backwards, as opposed to underneath the canopy, because it interferes with the structural integrity of the canopy, and it affects the roof lines. And the other thing with that, that passing lane or the pickup lane is that that's a current island that does not have pumps on it currently, that we put the building alongside of that, so I believe it's the same distance between that island pump now that people park at, and then the pump on the right-hand side of it. So I don't think there's any traffic difference in cars going in and out of that particular spot from that other pump. I think that's why we designed it that way, because that island's already there and it's empty, so we were putting the walls right up alongside of that.
Would you have any parking under the canopy there in front of the building? Handicap or?
Well, under the canopy in front of the building is, would actually, right now we're showing is a raised, a raised island, yeah, curved island.
Almost like a patio or something?
Yeah.
Sidewalk?
You know, products, because it's not, I mean, once, once you had a sidewalk to get into the building, it, I think when I, we'd previously looked at it, I don't think there's really enough room to have the sidewalk, parking, a drive lane, and then the parking on the other side along the road.
What's this, looks like an outdoor product display, what's that?
Yeah, that was just more, kind of a, you know, potential for, you know, like a. Okay, you know, just outdoor displays, like seat, like I said before, you know, like the seasonal outdoor displays.
Wouldn't you wash your fluid deck?
Yeah, stuff like that.
We have that current variance already.
Okay.
How many other zoning variances are you going to require for this?
There's going to be the lot coverage, the side setback, number of parking spaces, and then there's the multiple uses on a single site, and the conditional use permit for the convenience store.
Six.
Well, I mean, actual, I mean, because the, the conditional use permit, I don't, I don't know that I'd consider necessarily a variance, it's just something that the zoning board needs to grant. So.
It's going to remain a mobile station?
Yes.
And is there any other locations in the county besides the one that AJ mentioned in Route 96 that are similar operations? Car wash, mobile.
What about Holt?
Drive-through.
Thirty-one and two fifty? Okay. About Holt Road and Webster, there one up there? Anybody else from the board? Anyone in the audience like to comment on this sketch plan? No one? I'm sure. Any final comments? All right, thank you for coming, nice presentation.
All right, thank you.
And we'll be putting a letter together and get back to you. All right, Zach. Have at it.
Application number three. Lali and Shrika Shaw, 2041 Penfield Road, Penfield, New York 14526, request under Article 9-9-2 of the Code for Preliminary and Final Site Plan Approval to construct a 528-square-foot garage addition with associated site improvements on the 2.69-acre property located at 2041 Penfield Road. The property is now reformally owned by Lali and Shrika Shaw and his own PD. Application number 15P-0005, SBL number 139.08-2-1.111.
I passed out some handouts, if you can share that. So this application is concerning our property at.
Produce yourself.
Oh, my name is Niraj Shah. I'm a resident of Penfield. My, this application actually concerns my parents, Lali and Shrika Shah, they are also residents of Penfield, and the location of the property is 2041 Penfield Road. The property is located in what's called the PD District, so what that means is I'm before a lot of boards, basically. We've already presented this project during a work session, town board work session, and on March 4th, we presented this application at a public hearing. We also have zoning board hearings on March 19th coming up, and today I'm presenting this before you. It's not my first time here before you guys, because on September 12th, 2013, the planning board approved a larger project for this property. Before, this property only had my dad's tax practice office and a dental office. There's been much work that's happened since. An annex has gone up, a thirteen-hundred, 1,300-square-foot annex, which houses my businesses, my law firm and my CPA firm, right there. And lastly, there's a 6,000-square-foot building that's a new, the newest addition, that we've done a lot of progress on construction. We had to stop as the winter came, but we have the skeleton up and we have to finish the outside, but most of it's pretty much done, and it's going as planned. The reason why we're, I'm here before you is kind of timely, sort of. My father, he's elderly, he has no plans to retire. He is the owner of the tax preparation business. Recently, he's become frail, and his back went out late last year because he was sleeping on the ground with my son, and when he was, and when he got up off the ground, he just twisted his back in a, just in a slight manner, but it just kind of knocked him out. So when he went to the doctors, they gave him muscle relaxers, and that knocked out his knees. So then we went to the Penfield ambulance, where they were fortunate to help us out with a walker, but he's a stubborn guy, so he keeps his walker in the backseat, and he tries to manage by himself. So this is really because early of this year, he had to go to the town to get one of the handicap permits. So he doesn't really walk really that well anymore, he walks gingerly, but he's, he works like he was twenty, but he walks like he's like seventy, so. The garage is really for his benefit. Tax season occurs January to April. This pitch, this, this handout shows pictures that were taken January 14th. It was a small snowfall, I guess, the lot was plowed, but you can see how it's still pretty icy, it's still pretty snow conditions. The parking right now is on the side of the building, and you would have to walk across the front portion of the building to get to the main door. Often, both my dad and myself, we get there before the snowplow gets there, or just after the snowplow gets there, and nobody has time to shovel the walkways or anything like that. So now it's kind of becoming a concern. That's the whole point of this thing. Basically, we want to prevent the possibility of him injuring himself with his frail condition. Right now, there's two handicap spaces along the side of the building. With his new health, he would be required to take, occupy one of those handicap places, which would leave only one handicap place for customers of both the dental and my dad's practice. This garage addition would alleviate that concern. So, like I told you, there's been a lot of work that's been going on on the building construction-wise. There's still going to be work done probably into the spring, and then we'll probably be done soon after, I would think, but there is an incentive to move efficiently with this garage addition. We'd rather put, our aim is to minimize our, minimize our impact on our adjacent neighbors by completing this project at the same time as a larger building is being finished. This would prevent bringing in some of these larger construction equipments again on site, and it's important to note that the impacts are temporary in nature. Like I said, we did speak before the town board. They, from what I, what I know, I don't think they, they had major concerns. They didn't, we've spoke to them twice, and we're trying to address whatever concerns they have, but they're pushing it off on you. But during this zoning board application, you should know some of the things that we're going to be bringing up in the zoning board. One, one thing is the area variance application. That speaks to requesting relief from what may be a 50-foot setback to 39.1-foot setback of the proposed, the end of the garage addition. But it's important to also know, I, on the second page of our handout over here, if you guys can refer to it, I can try to explain this. I've kind of drew Penfield Road, and you know how Penfield Road is just a normal, two parallel lines, but to the left of Penfield Road, you can see kind of like that thicker, the medium thickness line that kind of goes straight, and then kind of comes towards the property in a diagonal way, and then goes back parallel. That's the reason why we need the setback. The garage is in front of where that diagonal took, that diagonal line took place. I asked our engineer what that was about, and he explained it that a while ago, the reason why the garage needs a 39.1-foot setback is because New York State at some time executed a taking right in front of the existing building where the garage is, but not in front of the new building, the 6,000-square-foot building. That, that really explains why the legal setback is less in front of the existing building compared to the new building, even though both buildings are aligned with Penfield Road. So in short, what a human would see are two buildings that are lined up. Penfield Road is a state highway. Lastly, the, what we've also requested with the zoning board, when I'm going to be presenting on March 19th, is a sign variance. The sign variance, I'll just read it. There's already approval for two 20-foot signs on the property, one kind of on the corner of Sanders Farm and Penfield Road, and another one where the existing sign is in front of the existing building. Now, there's more businesses on that same lot, on the one combined lot, and the code would allow a single 50-square-foot sign to promote the businesses that are on there. But instead of putting up a large 50-foot, square-foot sign that the code allows with the number of businesses that are there, we're requesting to change one of, instead of two 20-foot, square-foot signs, to change one of them from a 20-foot to a 30-foot, because that kind of, there are residents to the north of Penfield Road, so instead of having a big sign with the first property as a 50-square-foot sign, I think it goes, it would look better also with the, having a 20-square-foot sign with some passage, and then a 30-square-foot sign. The proposed new sign would be in similar design and structure as the existing sign that is now located on 2041 Penfield Road. Lighting for the sign would be similar to the existing sign and in compliance with the town code, and that is directional lighting from the ground. We are in receipt of Monroe County's Planning Department comments, and they're going to be reviewed by, reviewed and addressed by the engineer. And just this last week, we are in receipt of the PRC memo. I had a chance to, it was dated March 5th, I had a chance to skim it over, but to be honest, I haven't even been, had a chance to see my father much because corporate tax deadlines are March 15th, so we've been kind of pushing for that, so I haven't even been able to visit the engineer to address it. But I saw the comments, it didn't seem like there was not anything that we wouldn't be able to manage pretty quickly. So in conclusion, we've been residents of the town of Penfield since 1980, we've been owners of 2041 Penfield Road since 1986. I graduated from Penfield High. I just enrolled my five-year-old to Scribner Road, filled in the paperwork, so I'm excited that he's going to be going through the same Scrib, elementary school, middle school, and high school as I will. We feel fortunate to call Penfield as our home, and we've tried hard to maintain our properties at a high standard for all these years. We thank the board for considering our application and hope that it renders a favorable decision. And I can answer any questions at this time. Thanks.
You had a couple, the garage is going to be a single car garage or double?
Single.
Single, okay. Was there ever, this is all business right now, right, your businesses?
Yeah.
So he's really not living there, your father, it's just for he can come to work?
No, so if you go to the, if you go to the first page of the handout, I guess you could probably envision it in the bottom left-hand picture. The garage would kind of jet to the same level as how the 6,000-square-foot building is jetting out. If you see in the top right-hand corner, the only entrance is that one door that you see, there's a small square foyer, one, one door goes to my dad's office, and one door goes to Dr. Nichols', the dentist's office. Our whole goal is for him so then he can pull into this garage, and we would knock out that, the current window outside of the property, and there would become a door, so there would be no chance that there would be any ice or anything, he would just pull right into the garage and walk right into the, his, it would be his private garage, that's the only person that would be using it. But basically, there would be no ice, no snow. I was really concerned this year, especially when we would have certain. I was really concerned this year, especially when we would have certain snowfalls and everything. Right now, what he's doing is he's just parking it out here because he can't, I'm telling you, he can't walk even that much anymore.
Okay, that's on the west side of the building?
Which one?
Where the driveway is out to Saunders? Where you're gonna put the garage?
It would be not on the west side, it would be just north of the building. So if you, I think the best way to look at it is the second page. I've kind of given a drawing, and you can see how the garage is labeled.
All right, it's gonna be, you're gonna obviously match with the siding?
Yes.
The roofing to match everything else?
Yeah.
Do you have a window on the north side there?
Yeah, I think, I don't have a rendition of what the building looks like, but I think we, I gave it to either Harold's office or the planning group. But basically, on the one side that's facing the road, there's a window, there's a window or something. So it wouldn't seem like it's a garage from the-
The north side.
The north side and everything. And it would be similar structure and feel and everything. That's what we're trying to do.
Okay, and that's the best spot you feel that the garage can be placed? There's no other place there in that building?
Yeah. Because the, absolutely. Because right now, you have pavement to the west and the driveway, we would be making the driveway, we would, there is right now a driveway currently because we're getting rid of the circular driveway. And that would be the only place that, that would be the only place where a garage could be fit. Because the, I guess the west side of the building is my dad's tax business. The east side of the building is the dental office.
What about the neighbors? There was a lot of neighbors concerned with the original couple of projects you had going down there. Have you heard any other concerns?
I, we haven't heard anything. But I think one of the concern, like, one thing that I think Mark or someone mentioned to me is they were concerned that the project has, the equipment has been there and all that stuff, they've been still working. But that's why I wanted to specifically address, there's been a lot of work that has been going on. It's not like we just parked the equipment and nothing's happening. The reason why it's there, we put up my annex, that's a thirteen-hundred-square-foot annex. And then they quickly started putting up the skeleton of the six-thousand-square-foot annex. And the reason why we're trying to time all these board meetings together is so then we can continue working while the equipment is kind of there instead of having another project. And that's why I put it in my bold nature is we aim to minimize the impact on our adjacent neighbors by kind of completing the project at the same time, and the impacts would be temporary.
Do you have an alternative plan if the ZBA doesn't approve your area variance?
No alternative plan.
Any other questions from the board? I think you answered, did a nice job presenting.
I just read off the sheet.
I have to admit that on TV, really. So the idea would be to put this up concurrently with finishing the other structure?
Correct.
So as soon as the snow melts?
Yeah, my dad likes things done yesterday, so he was actually hoping that it would be in for this tax, because his health just got really bad, so we're just trying to get it, we missed this tax season. We're hoping that it would be in place for next tax season.
Okay, I got one more thing, if I could, I just found the comments from the PRC. Yeah, there was like eight comments they made, but you said you didn't get to take a chance?
We didn't get a chance because I'm a CPA as well, so like I'm, I'm-
No problem.
Under the gun until March fifteenth.
Okay, you might want to take a look at them and then answer them and get back to us on those.
We will.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone in the audience care to comment on this application? No one. Okay.
Thank you.
Neil Raj, thank you very much.
Thanks.
We will call this hearing closed. Thanks for coming, everyone.
Okay. What do you want to start with?
Just go down the list at the top.
You have three choices.
All right, let's start with the therapiest.
Biggest pool in the world.
That's a pretty big pool.
They actually went to the zoning board last week, just recently, and got the determination from the zoning board that they need the conditional use permit within the residential agricultural district as they did prior. They went back, originally went therapiest, was originally approved and got a determination that they fall under Ag and Markets Law for equine and canine treatment therapy, vet type uses, so-
Veterinary practice?
Preliminary discussions with them, and we said since the zoning board made the original determination that they met those requirements under that, in that district, that they ought to go back to them. They went back and received that conditional use permit from the zoning board already. So that part was kind of ahead of us, which typically kind of happens after sketch plan, but Harold got it on the agenda, so they've, they've covered that piece of it. Basically, the planning board now is talking about site issues and layouts and not as much the uses, but just kind of the layout of the site.
So as long as they're in that classification, that, there's a lot of places in East Penfield that are, that have bigger barns than this?
Uh huh.
More of them.
Most of our horses, they fall under agricultural use through Ag and Markets Law, so similar to any of our farmers and horse stables and stuff like that, I'm sure there's parts of much larger size.
And on your, towards the rear, I mean, a setback, hundred, two hundred feet mark maybe?
Yeah, I think so. I don't have a dimension, I'm just looking at that hundred-foot setback. The first, first building is gonna be at least three hundred feet back for the first barn, and then the second building is kind of, seeing, hidden behind it, but further back behind that, and the grade falls out as you go back on the property as well. It's all kind of, somewhere we had a topo map, it kind of shows it, as the neighbor share, there is a high point up-
Topo hidden in here.
By the existing house, oh, thank you.
Towards northeast.
Kind of goes, and then, yeah, it kind of falls off towards the north of that property.
So it's not out of place for that type of agricultural use in that area? It's similar in nature to what's already going on all around it?
Yeah, no, agricultural. Obviously, residential, you know, it's large structures for residential, but I think East Penfield and an RA two district, somewhere barns, farm structures and stuff around.
Are there any plans for that road, where she said there was really, they don't have shoulders, right? Is there any plans for development on that road at all?
I'm not aware of any current plans to, to change the road or upgrade the road in that area.
I think one thing is, we'd want them to have some dedicated walking trails so they're not walking dogs on the road anymore.
Yeah, we can condition it.
I think that's important.
Yeah, so no walking dogs on the road, it's dangerous. It's like factory walking dogs, you know?
One dog, two dogs, or three dogs?
Maybe there's stone dust or even a paved pathway or something.
Something they can maintain in the winter.
Snow blowing around.
A path would be good, they'd get one of those little skiers and something.
Loop around and have an access. If you're doing it, if you're doing it that many times a day with that many dogs.
Just enough to get the dogs out there.
Have a safe place to do it.
It's an aggressive plan, but I think it's-
That's why we asked about phasing, is whether, you know, they were looking to do it all in one phase. It sounds like they're still kind of going through some size, what they want and what the building, and I think costs are gonna weigh into it once they get into what it costs.
The only thing I guess I didn't ask is, on the driveway, on the west side, there, is that a sidewalk next to it, or what's that little border?
It's not.
There's two small parallel lines.
See, it's off.
Yeah, it wasn't believable down there, I wasn't sure if that's a-
It looks like there's a loop to drop off horses, right, with a horse trailer? And then you have the, I guess, edge of Digment to the west, and then there's another-
This line.
It's a big question, whether it's a path or a sidewalk or something, if you're walking the dogs in or out.
Or just a cat or-
Could just be an offset.
I guess it could be a cat, some accidental copy and paste.
Some possibility it's a fence to keep animals from entering the roadway.
I mean, those are details they can get into with-
Yeah, it's a sketch trade.
Yeah, final, they, you know, has worked with the architect, but I think Dean has done some of the, you know, stuff himself. I believe he's an engineer, so he's kind of done some of the layout and, you know, rough massing and sizing. They have a surveyor that they're working with to do the topo and the layout of the site. What's the board's overall general feel about some of the project?
Embival. Stormwater management area up there, that close to the wetlands, is that gonna-
I mean, as long as they're outside of the wetland boundary, obviously that's where the water's discharged into ultimately, but as long as they keep it outside the wetland, outside the bug area.
They get there anyway.
That's where it's generally discharged into.
And that's where they put all the manure.
The manure next to the stormwater pond is probably not free.
A lot of dogs.
That is, fifty dogs, four horses.
We'll look down under that.
Exactly, the one guy down went from a, I mean. It may be quiet.
He's west.
He's west.
Oh, he's west some?
Yeah. The one he was talking about.
Okay, right, right.
That's the newest neighbors. That's the lead town during northeastern, that's all.
There should still be buckling out between those properties. They were saying that they would-
Some kind of landscape, a comfort.
Still barking dogs.
I'm okay with it, I mean, it's an aggressive plan.
Good to see you've been successful in doing what you do. I kind of have a list of some items for the sketch letter, if I run through those quickly. A lot of them, we kind of sent them in the PRC, just kind of forethought things about, make sure they come back with a subject system design, obviously the stormwater. Briefly covered the number of employees, hours of operation, visitors to the site, but, you know, again, they should address lights. I think they said emergency exit lights, and then mostly just safety lights for the parking lot. They briefly touched on the phasing of the project, but maybe as they get into it further with the design a little bit and the costs is kind of how that breaks down. I think they talked about the driveway turnaround for the fire marshal, got the show handicap parking, site distance is at the entrance, I know there's a hill there where their driveway falls, and make sure we don't create a site distance issue, you know, where does the surprise where they're pulling it out? Make that a safety concern.
You get frankly that north parking row could be parallel instead of angled, and then just make it a little wider and then have a turnaround or something.
Yep, yeah, the fire marshal wants to make sure if he's got to get a, he lets your fire truck in there, then he's got enough room to maneuver to-
Well, the other thing they're gonna do is, they're gonna haul horses and horse trailers.
Yep.
So they're gonna pull in-
They're gonna loop around and drop off.
Yeah, I mean, that's-
I think they're still kind of working on a lot of that.
I think that's their loop at the bottom of the screen is.
Right.
Yeah.
Details there, but to make sure, put a turning template on it, make sure you can get a horse trailer, make sure you can get a fire truck around that, so they may-
Yeah, they might want some parking for trailers, in other words, a truck and a trailer.
Yep.
Somewhere.
At least you got one or two of them, give them time to-
The people aren't ready to let the horse go, even at that park zone.
They're gonna ride the horses over there if they're ready to breed, so.
True.
I never realized you could do all this type of things, with just dogs and cats and horses, I mean.
Yeah, they're proposing a pool for horses that, you know, they have them standing it up to their chest.
Those dog psychologists.
Aqua therapy is you have for humans, they do this somewhere, kind of treatment, take the weight off the body, especially if you have a broken leg or something.
Can you mention your notes? We want more information, more detail on the pond, or the-
Double Lake Board.
Brown Lake.
Yep.
When they do those ponds, they gotta be situated by the board of health or anything like that?
That's, that's something that's gonna have to take a look at, especially with animals.
Animals and stuff.
Board of health is, how do you drain it?
Right.
Where does it drain to? How do you keep it clean? Clean, do you get ducks and yeast in it, you know, what do you, you know, that's something we'll have to take a closer look at.
As long as it's not humans, I mean.
Yeah, but you're still, if you're creating a pond or something, do you do treatment in it? Is it, you know, chlorine-based pool, or is it just gonna be an open pond? I think just a little more detail on what kind of-
Yeah, what's the proposal?
Obviously landscaping, buffering of the neighbors, landscaping of the site, details on the signage. Obviously, you know, wayfinding signs or at least signage for the property itself. Zach did ask about hosting, you know, big tournaments or events that, you know, some agility events or tournaments, you could bring out a hundred people, a hundred dogs.
I mean, seventeen thousand square feet rehab site, that's a lot of space.
Isn't there an indoor pool there as well?
Yeah, an indoor pool, they have office area spaces, they have conference room space, they have some other-
It's a still.
That's a big-
They got a lot of space.
I think that could be a question, is if you're gonna host a dog show or an agility event or tournament, then I think you could have some traffic concerns on Kennedy Road and parking concerns, so if they want to find that, I think-
Can't we make them come back if they try to have anything like that?
Well, I think that's a good question, is to put in there, go to preliminary finals, and, you know, parking is based on usage, not-
Appointments.
Based on, yeah, having appointments, not as a walk-in.
The north part is all, those are all little dog apartments or something?
The boarding.
Yeah, those are-
The boarding suites.
Yeah.
Oh, it actually says that, sorry. I couldn't read that, I was guessing.
It does say boarding suites.
It's, yeah. Good for me.
But if that's a full-size door, that's a pretty big pen for a dog. A lot of these places, they're boarded, they keep it in crates. They, they are crateless.
These guys aren't messing around.
They're crateless.
Probably three hundred bucks a night for-
I'm sure it's not.
Over.
This is the Ritz Carlton.
I mean, their vets become a, they're known for being a unique facility in this area.
About America.
If the new one is anything like the existing facility, it's very neat, nice sign, well-maintained.
Sounds like landscaping.
That's good.
Well, their neighbors that'll look very nice too, and their neighbors that got up to speed.
Anything else? Kind of, just kind of ran through an overview of things they'll be looking for in the preliminary final.
Just looking at the, what was her last name, Alger? Too big for the neighborhood, road infrastructures in question, traffic. As far as traffic, if there are fifty cars a day and they're open ten hours, I look at that as like a car every twelve minutes. It's not super crazy.
It's a rural road, but I don't think that's one every twelve minutes, is it? Yeah.
Not even that.
It sounds like they work with their neighbors as well, like these would be to farm some of their land.
And I'd say they reached out to the neighbors across the street. We told them there's a new property that are next to them that's looking to buy, and he's already bought the property, got approvals of his house next door, they've reached out to him, it sounds like they've tried to talk with the neighbors and form them of what they're looking to do. Okay, somebody want to move to send a letter?
Move to send a letter?
Back to. Denicore.
Hetske.
Hi.
Ashley.
Hi.
Denicore.
Hi.
McCord.
Hi.
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 The draft of what they're showing validations to. Dogs like and waste really don't tell you much.
It's a farming operation or an agricultural operation. Like livestock, it happens to be dogs and horses.
And they have to comply with setbacks from property lines based on housing of livestock.
Hundred feet, that's the subject.
Yep, it's gotta be a hundred feet from any property line. Okay, mobile.
Mark, would you like Taco Bell as well at the shoulders? Very existing.
Um. Who's that?
I honestly thought that, uh. This one was. Better designed than. I was expecting it to be. I mean, when I, I go there a lot. I mean, it's right around the corner and I have a mobile card, so I go there a lot.
Kind of have to, though.
I think they gotta work on some of the traffic flows.
What's that?
I think they're gonna have conflicts there on the right side of the building when they're coming out of the pickup. You've got less than twenty feet between the pump and the wall curve, whatever that is. And if you're in a large vehicle and you pull in to the pump and you're three feet from it.
You're not so tight. We've.
You're not gonna get through it.
Concerns into that.
You're gonna have about an eight foot, maybe a nine foot head for a car driving, which is really narrow.
It's very tight right there.
Yep, so.
They potentially could stripe it or.
They could just pump from one side only or, you know, how they, you know, pumps only on the other side to open that up if that's.
Well, there's, there's nothing happening where that ramp is. Maybe that curb could push two or three feet to the left, so they immediately have more room because they can pass the windows. Which would hurt.
That part right there.
That's why you have cars like this.
Could, could they move the pumps out? Are they, they gonna leave them where they are?
I think they're gonna leave the pumps where they are. Maybe the building is a little bit more. Flexible. I mean, you could say, you know, tighten the building up a foot or two just to kind of get a little bit more.
So either two feet makes a big difference there. Sometimes I believe those pumps have at least two feet on.
Yeah, but you don't know how to drive.
That's true. Well, you've been talking to my wife.
So I think, I think the canopy is more the restriction right now is it's an existing canopy. I don't think they want to replace it. They don't want to replace the pumps that are there now. Take down the existing C store and then put up something new. It's just a matter of how do you fit it all together and.
I just think this is a, you know, vital spat in the town, this corner here. And we want to be cautious, you know, how big, how to make this, you know, like green space, you know, make it look nice and stuff. Because the town spent a lot of money trying to keep this nice.
They do have to get some, um, some variances from the zoning board, um, lot coverage, you know, so they're going from what sixty-seven percent to like seventy-four percent.
So they're moving that curb to the north, so there will be less green space to the north or is that staying the same?
Um, the current curb cuts are staying the same. The access that goes to the bank is staying the same at Wegmans.
Talking about where those parking spots are in the north side there?
Now that's gonna stay, that's, as it is, it's not straight.
It's there.
Part that impacts is the, basically the car wash in the southern end is where they are basically pushing back a little closer to Taco Bell. Yeah. And it's just.
That's where people park anyway if they.
So if you can see the, the bottom end.
North.
On the north side.
Yes. It's not straight, like you said.
Right. The, the southern end is where the car wash is going right there is what's impacting the green space is adding in.
Mm-hmm.
Currently, they do have an issue, um, right now we've looked and they are on septic, which is allowable because they, basically all they have is a, is a toilet for employees and they have a slop sink, so.
Right.
Happens.
No big deal.
You can't run a car wash in a septic system, so they need to run negotiations. We don't have any sanitary sewer, municipal sanitary sewer in the area. Um, that all the four corners are fed from behind, so they come from other developments and basically feed from the plaza into. So they have to enter in a private negotiation with Wegmans because Wegmans owns the property that Taco Bell is on. There is sanitary sewer to Taco Bell. There is a stub out of there, but they have to enter a negotiation with Wegmans to basically tie into their sewer. Our closest sewer is on the backside of Wegmans Plaza. Um, on the other side of Target and everything else, so it's a long ways to go to. So that's one question is whether this might be a phased project. Go ahead with the convenience store, put that part in, get that up and running and then work on getting the car wash if and when they can. Work out something with Wegmans. Um, that also involves the health department because now you're tying into the private system. Um, so the local health department have to weigh in on that as well. So that's. Staff's biggest concern with this and there's other technical issues, but basically getting sanitary sewer connection to them.
There's no sanitary on two fifty right on the road? Nothing.
It's all behind.
No. Kind of across the street, it's not even, it's behind McDonald's, so it's, everything is fed from the back. So the closest sanitary sewer on the other end is back here out of the apartment or the homes over there, and then our closest sanitary sewer on the other side is, is behind Wegmans. So all those are fed with just individual little services out of there that go to individual businesses. And then the other side of the street. Um, comes out of the plaza and that plaza feeds to, um, Cass. So our closest sanitary sewer you can see is over by all these over on that end. On the other side, it's over by the park on that area over there, so it's. And then everything, I mean, those were the municipal ones going, then obviously there's individual services that go to the plaza through, so this is surprising. It's one of our major commercial areas, but sanitary sewers all fed from the back.
Well, well, that's our community car wash now, we'll have to go somewhere else. There to get relocated once.
Um.
Who's the DJ?
Obviously, if they decide to go to preliminary final, you know, sanitary sewer connection, I think you do the taco buffering from the car wash, you know, you got lights and spray. Yes, it is Taco Bell next door, so it's another commercial entity, but some buffering to them. Um, stormwater treatment, he talked about that, you know, that does connect into the state system. The state's not gonna let you tie into their system if you're creating any additional stormwater runoff, so it'll have to do with some rain gardens or some. Outfiltrated areas to offset the additional payment area. Um, outside storage and display, they do have some now, but I know they were showing mighty flame or some propane tank.
Yeah, they were talking about propane storage.
Right there on the propane exchange on the west side of the.
Yep. I don't think they currently have propane exchange. That's something they'd have to go to the zoning board for is additional outside storage. They do leave.
They have curios.
If ice outside now and. DJ said is windshield washer fluid and those types of things with that. Um, obviously wayfinding, signage striping, helping with traffic flow, you know, getting people around, understanding getting around the building. Uh, necessitate building elevations, you know, as Terry said, it's a very visible location on the corner. Make sure it's a decent looking building and a car wash. I don't know if the board wants to send any letter of support to the zoning board for variances yet or wait until they come back and, they haven't made application to the zoning board yet.
Wait until they come back.
Come back and see what they're proposing if, you know, plans change with the car wash comes off, if they reduce the variances and. Yeah. Any other?
So we get an overall feeling?
Concerns, questions?
I actually, like I said at the beginning, I was kind of impressed with how it was laid out, but, I mean, that. That green space right now that's there is just, you don't even know it's there. Um, that's not, I mean, to me it's like, I'm not gonna miss it.
High quality green space.
The issue, you want them to improve it, not make it worse.
Yeah, maybe along the front there's.
Well, you could make it nicer and.
They could do something along the front.
You know, I still go back to the whole, I'd rather have ten percent of beautiful green space than forty percent of just. Nothing attractive.
Our landscape is all. Well, that's maybe they can do some stuff along four forty-one and.
Yeah, well, they had a couple striped areas there, maybe that could be the.
Take that quarter piece out and.
Yeah.
You know, that's currently striped, put that back into green space, put one nice garden area in there.
Nice planters like we make Cam's do across the street.
Yep, maybe where that sign is, that, that's useless space there, uh, in the front. We could do something there. Yeah, there, there, it can't be used for parking.
And let's say this corner over here is.
Definitely there.
Cut the stripped out space, you could either put planters in there if you don't want to take out the asphalt, at least have some. Yeah. Anything else? We got enough for a letter? I'm feeling we probably do snow storage right here.
Bastian.
Put trees and things there, you can't.
Heskey.
Hi.
Bastian.
Hi.
Denon Court.
Hi.
McCord.
Hi.
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 Did I cut you guys off too quick? Nope. All right.
Last one.
This one. Dr. Shaw.
Shaw property.
Yeah, well, uh, well, we could do it two ways, I guess. I mean, we got that draft resolution or we can just table it. And send it back and let him see what zoning is gonna do and have him answer the PRC questions.
One thing would be. Uh, if we. Do we have an issue on the twenty-sixth with attendance?
He'll be here.
We're both gone.
You guys are gone.
They're gone. Bob said he would be here.
So we have four of us.
I'm here.
Maybe you can go. To be, we could.
I think. Tell them what waits for everyone.
That's the only thing that we got going.
Yeah, you know, I mean, so, I mean, if we want to let him see what zoning says about the variance and then we can, uh. Uh, let him address what the eight things from, uh, PRC. Do you mind?
That's kind of the big issue.
Do we have on that agenda for the twenty-sixth?
Yeah.
Um, we potentially could have, um, day town, um, that building O. We've talked about basically as an architectural update, that's one of their out parcels. The board had completed an overall approval for the plaza, including the outbuildings. Uh, one of the conditions of your approval was to come back when they're ready to do those buildings. Uh, I believe they have a tenant for one of the building right at the end, so if you're looking down the street of shops across that green area. Building at the end, I believe they have a tenant that's looking to come in for that, so that would be basically a work session item, since it was already, uh, approved overall for the whole plaza. Those buildings were approved, basically just have to come back in for architectural review by this group, so.
What is it? Do we not?
Uh, I believe it's part of RGH or it's a medical use.
We just got the stuff today.
They just came in today, I said I didn't have a chance to look at it, but, um, they said it.
I see next week.
So whatever your next meeting is, uh, they'd like to be on that, the meeting to, to talk with the board, work session.
Okay.
And then, do you have any other miscellaneous?
No, uh, York here would have been one, but it's going to the ZVA now, so we don't have that.
Yeah, York here would have been the other one if the board. Tabled it tonight pending visit to the site and everything else, you know, we could have come back and rendered a decision at the last meeting. Or next meeting. All right, so we can talk about, uh, I don't know, if you wanna, you know, we can issue a tabling resolution tonight. Um, ask for responses, PRC responses.
Also, the board is supportive of sending a letter to the ZVA.
No, I don't want to do that. I'll let them make their own decision.
Okay.
I'm gonna make the motion, somebody else has. Cause I, I think we've done enough variances and, uh, no, I just, I, you know, if they, they want to approve it, I don't think, you know, sometimes I think it's, uh. Good, but let them, if they feel it's.
If they want our support, let the ZVA request it.
Could be approved or denied on their own.
Right.
Thank you. Other than the PRC responses, anything else the board wants to see or needs for asking, for tabling something, what you want to see in two weeks that?
That you didn't see on the plan. That we don't saw on the plan.
I mean, obviously they'll go to the zoning board, we'll have that information, we'll have responses to that.
Any elevation or any kind of rendering?
There were.
That was part of the eight things that I think, uh, the PRC mentioned, right? The elevation, the landscaping. What else? The one in the middle.
The elevation is.
There's the front.
Yeah, sure.
Just cut away of a floor plan.
Well, it's lighting for the garage.
Yeah, that doesn't feel like a garage.
The garage was in the front, so it was.
Did two different views.
You were, you were looking at it, but it's.
Okay, I see.
One's, one's in the, one's in the.
Here's it.
Okay, so that's what you would see going.
West.
Westbound on four forty-one.
Cause there's nothing from Sanders Farm now, correct? Eastbound to Wegmans with the garages on anymore, correct? It's all like general business, commercial, right? And now across the street on the north side, we're doing away with houses with garages, correct? Starting from Harris Whalen moving, we rezone that and we're changing that going west, correct?
The first one showed.
We're putting this is. Business is in.
It's what you'll see from.
There's nothing precluding them from having a garage with your business, but they are gonna be businesses, but you could have a garage with your business if. So wanted to. I mean, there's nothing for having a garage.
No, but there's nothing there, any businesses right now with garages.
Um, well, there's some metro in the piece across from Wegmans east of Harris Whalen. Park Drive, there's a couple of businesses in there. I think there's an insurance business or there's a. Uh, it used to be a.
Play landscaping in your.
Landscaping.
Been converted to.
Right.
Converted.
Right, because depending they're converting them, that's, they're converting in the opposite direction, I'm saying on that side of the road. As they, and we're moving them down, you know, you're starting to tear houses down in the future for more commercial.
Yeah, we've seen that on ISO.
And I'm just saying like, okay, so we're gonna start moving that direction, westerly on the north side, going more commercial as they start to sell off those properties, right? Those people have been trying to sell their homes to do that for the town kinda, and now we're coming back this way, we're adding garage to commercials, so interesting. It's not gonna fit in with the scheme of things eventually, if we're going that way in one direction and coming back the other, so just keep that in mind. If the zoning, you know, okay's it.
It's a little bit of a dated photo, but at least it shows, um.
Most recent.
New garage is annexed in the back and then they've already, you got a construction on the six thousand square foot building that's west of that. This building will match, this addition will match the setbacks of that, uh, that this board previously approved on that piece.
What about the neighbors' concerns?
Uh, the neighbors were down Sanders Farm Drive, uh, most of their concern, I don't think they had any kind of concern about the garage itself, uh, their concern was.
One maybe on Willapond as well.
Uh, yes, Willapond Way, um, their concern more was about the duration of the construction, seeing piles of dirt, um, the equipment out there, so. Uh, we've shared that with the applicant and that's part of, he said, well, maybe we can do this garage at the same time and get done and get out of there, but our plan is to, you know, wrap that up this spring and summer and bring that to a close.
That's why he's not on time because the garage issue?
No, they did all, I mean, they worked well into the, the fall, early winter and then obviously we had a hard, hard freeze and a lot of snow this winter, so they weren't able to do site work and. Fred Tops Island finish off the project, so once the weather breaks, they'll get back on site and keep going.
See who we send to zoning, make the motion to table it, kind of thinking of the zoning.
For a second.
Heskey.
Hi.
Bastian.
Hi.
Denon Court. McCord.
Hi.
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 The only other item we have, um, has been tabled is, uh. The twenty-seven seventy-five Pennfield Road, uh, piece and since they sent the letter in and we can table it, basically you have to take no action till I just wanted to put it on the record.
That's the small lot.
That's a small lot out of Pennfield Road, they had to wait till the weather to break.
Yeah.
They sent their letter, but just to put on the record, the board will take no action.
I can't do per tester anything, can I?
You gotta wait till the crown, frost.
Permafrost.
It's all the agenda items.
All right, well said, I guess we will adjourn. All right, well said, I guess we will adjourn.